Not yet. This is just the public hearing.
There have been any public comments?
What's this? On the what? I didn't really see what you're saying. On the what?
The public is probably here for the budget. Do you have any public comments on the 2022 budget?
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And the garbage trade?
I think there are three things that matter.
Water, sewer, and garbage. And there's one new fee for the garbage cart replacement that wasn't on our fee schedule last year. You don't get too many of them, but it was on there.
And this is just what the county's raised us, so we have to pass it on.
We took into consideration. Thank you. There are fee increases and then, you know, disposable fees and whatnot. Bonnie mounted on it.
I tried to do this.
I actually don't. Make a motion to accept the minutes from July 21st, 22nd.
I have a question on some of the bills. I assume the North Forty?
Fire Department.
That's what I thought. And the Ziggy's, I'm guessing the new signs and stuff?
Yes.
Yeah.
On that, July 8th, there were two purchases at the McGregor Company for the exact same amount.
Oh, did I? Is that key then twice?
For $97.31.
Then I'll have to take one of those off.
Is that for grass seed or chemicals or something?
I got spray. Round up and take 40 for the blankets.
I know, I'm looking. Just so you know, the Ziggy's, was the stuff for the park, the roof and the tram and... That did it got?
Was it dials?
For the dials? That was the 1248. The other one was for the signpost.
Do you have additional questions? I move to approve the bills for July.
So, Captain Ross was called to say that they were incorrect. I gave you a printout of
Thank you.
the page that is concerning. And the changes that I made are highlighted. She said that she didn't say that I said she's... She said she didn't say she signed the easement. And I went back and reviewed it, and she did not say that at that meeting. So, I need the changes. And then there's a new copy of the minutes that we were about to talk, that you can see that explains what happened with the changes already made. And then that will be posted on the website and filed. If you approve. Make a motion to accept the current minutes from April 21st, 22nd. I'll second your favor.
We need to review the man with the foreign language agreement with Keller Associates for the list of other issues. It's part of consideration to allow mayor to assign amendments.
This has been on the agenda for a couple of months, and then it underwent some changes. The attorney reviewed it, USDA reviewed it.
Is this after that meeting we had last?
Yeah, I thought Stillman was going to be here to talk about this, so. Do you have anything?
I can't speak for Stillman, but I think this is... This was agreed upon, you know, for the meeting as far as doing the additional temperature monitoring and the technical memo. That's as far as I know.
Do you have any can, Justin?
What's happening?
Do you have any can on that, on this?
No, not really, other than we had that meeting with everybody and just kind of said that there was... He needed to be able to make changes to the contract, I think. I think that's all that I got out of it.
He needed to be able to make changes because they have to... We have to have a plan in place for the future. And so he needed to change it so that he can research what options are best for us in the future.
Pretty much an RD requirement for them to sign off on the next phase of the funding. This has to get completed.
You don't want the temperature of the water going out or something. We had to have more.
Right. So he was going to research a couple of different options as to what's the best option for us. But he needed this to be signed so that he could go forward with. Yeah. Well, I move to... Let me read that. So we're just allowing the mayor to sign this?
Yeah, you're basically accepting it and giving him permission to sign it.
I move to accept it and allow the mayor to sign it.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second?
I'll run through it. Pass this.
The council need to review the ICBT agreement and consider the mayor to sign the agreement.
This is a few right up?
Yeah, I just thought I'd... I know that Ken have some comments on the contract. So this is your... This is your work contract for the half million dollars block grant. And these dollars are going to use primarily for the engineering work. And so now that you execute this, we're going to get all the files set up worth with Bonnie and Wendy on that as well as the DEQ process. So this will allow, I think, assuming once Stillman gets through the technical memo piece and then for his full engineering mobility to get started and use these dollars... The plan is use these dollars over this year to get that worth done. And so... And then, Ken, a question on some of the compliance things that we worked with you on. There's ADA, the 504 ADA and Fair Housing. These are things you've gone through before where you've gotten block grants historically. So we just work with you to make sure that you are making progress in those areas. And it really mitigates any sort of risk that comes with the dollars. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign that agreement for NFCDG agreement. I'll approve it.
My work is done.
Do you skip the budget? The budget?
Yeah, right there.
Nothing changed since last month.
Well, I move to approve this for your 2022 budget.
We're not going to be approving that tonight. This is just one last look over and then it'll be on the agenda for the rest. That's the last one.
So I'd had a... I think I asked you about this when I was in for that USDA meeting. The week starts on... It goes Monday to Sunday, right?
Sunday to Saturday.
Sunday to Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, the week starts Sunday.
Yeah, because at the end, it's the pay period. It's Monday first, Sunday to the following.
Weekend just split up?
We end up.
Or is it Monday through?
No, it's Monday through Sunday. No, you're right. Monday through Sunday.
So on the week that they get off early, it starts on Monday, so there wouldn't be... They're not working the 40 hours that week, correct? Because they get the four hours on that Friday from the weekend before, correct?
Correct.
So they'd work 40 hours.
So one week they work 44, and then the next week they only work 36. Essentially.
Well, kind of. We only work 40, but...
You get the two hours in case there's a problem on the weekend, right?
Well, because, okay, so if you work Monday through Sunday, you worked... You worked those two additional two, which is the four. So you actually worked 44 hours.
Right, but...
Because you're never going to take that Friday prior to that weekend off. So the following, you take that half day.
Yes, so that's essentially what it looks like, yes. It looks like 44 and 36, yes.
Okay.
But the thing is, is that Monday through, and you work 36, you're using that four hours of comp time. So that's considered your 40 hours. So if you had worked, say, one time 10 hours that week, you skipped two hours overtime that week that you'd had comp. If that makes sense.
We get overtime on the week that we did... We did use comp?
That when you use that comp, you don't get paid the four hours overtime when you worked that weekend.
Well, the comp is never overtime.
Right. So if you worked 40 hours and then you worked that... Those four hours on that weekend, that actually is 44 hours. But you're going to use those extra four hours the following.
Right, right.
Okay, so that will make it 40. Like at one day you worked 10 hours and you actually had an additional two hours, you can... You'd get that as overtime.
So is that the new thing?
Yeah, so it...
Okay.
When you're using that comp, it's considered work, time worked, not anything else.
So, because how it was before was...
I think I disagree with that. And the only reason why is I brought this up last time was just they didn't really work 40 hours a week, though. He worked 36, and he got four from time before, but he didn't...
Right, but they're worked.
But he did not necessarily. That weekend, they're on call for two hours both days, right?
Right.
But if they don't come in, they didn't actually work.
They have to come in.
They have to come down and check on them.
Oh, they do? Yeah, okay.
It's not like they're waiting for the phone.
I got. That's where I was under the impression. Okay. So those weekends, okay, I believe that that makes sense. I was under the impression they anxiously waited by the phone for a problem.
Normal call, normal on-call. Is that... And occasionally, like in the winter when the water plant is full, maybe there'll be a weekend where we don't have to check on it one time or something?
Sure. No, no, that's totally... I was... I think that was probably... I caused all the confusion last weekend, and I apologize if I did. Because that's why I was having the issue saying they didn't really work 40 hours, but they did. I... Judge me to kind of sound like, well, sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not. But it sounds like the majority of the time they are there, it's just those two hours. So yes, I would agree that now they've gone over, yeah, they should get overtime even if they only have 36.
And we're supposed to put, if we work more than two hours, we're supposed to clock in.
Yeah.
Well, that would mean too, you should get overtime for that.
At their... There, and they're doing their two hours, they're not going to run here if something comes up to clock in for the additional time. A lot of times they'll write it down. There's been times where Josh or Justin, instead of two hours, has put three hours comp because they have had to work. Something came up.
That makes sense.
So... So I think, yeah, we would like them to clock in, but I understand where they're coming from. They're not here to clock in. And sometimes they can't leave because they've got a situation, so.
Yeah, I would agree. They work four hours on a weekend and then 36 hours a week, but if they work more than that, that puts them over four.
Yeah.
Why didn't you just bring this up last?
There's a lot of extras.
I apologize if that was my...
No, and that's why, because people get confused, and so we wanted to clarify and write it down, talk about it again before we approve something, and then it's not clear quite yet, so.
And then the holiday, working on a holiday is in this new personal policy, which I printed out. That's on that motion.
Yeah.
And this actually says if you work on a holiday, like emergency work, like plowing, then you get another holiday on a different day, and you get paid time and a half on that day that you worked.
But don't you have to do it in a certain amount of time?
Is this within 60 days?
Yeah, 60 days.
But the only thing that I wasn't 100% certain, and maybe even go in the rest of the blanks. So like on that, whatever holiday that was, President's Day, they worked, let's say, five hours. Their normal shift would have been eight hours. So I understand that they would get time and a half for the five hours and then get another holiday, say, on Wednesday. But will they be made whole for that other three hours, was my question.
Yes, because they're taking that.
Because they would get the holiday pay on Wednesday, the eight hours of holiday pay when they would normally have worked holiday, the eight hours. But where they only worked actually five hours.
But then they would get more than eight hours holiday as we compensate. Okay, so say they worked six.
Okay.
And so there's two hours. And they decide that they want to take that holiday on a different day and get paid time and a half for that one time because they ended up working six. We're not going to pay them that extra two because that would be... How would you make that... Would you make that regular pay or time and a half?
Yeah, that's what... That was my question. That's what I didn't understand. So they'd get six hours of time and a half on the holiday and then eight hours on the day off.
I think the way, yeah.
Yes, that's all. I think that's the... I think so would do a similar thing to, like, if you get called in, if you're on a holiday or vacation, you get called in for emergency work, you get like minimum amount of time of issue, you get time out, and you get that day back later, even though they're only there six hours and they get eight hours later, but they give up a holiday. So to me, I agree, they should get whatever they worked that specific time they worked that holiday, even if it was maybe only three hours at time and a half, but they came in on that holiday. So they shouldn't get a full holiday off somewhere else, even though I guess you get five hours of it. Well, dang it, they came in on a holiday, the rest of us didn't, so that's my opinion on it.
Right. So I think it's paid... The holidays paid it straight time, though.
Yes, if they had other holiday, obviously, then they would get that.
Holiday they worked. The makeup holiday.
Yeah, the holiday they worked. Make a whole.
Okay, the holiday is straight back. Thank you. I just want to make sure I am...
That seems fair.
Yeah.
No, I'm totally agree.
So you get time and a half for the actual time you're working on a holiday, and then you get a whole day in lieu of that later on. You got six days at your regular time. So you get your... Basically, your holiday back.
I understand that. But my only question is, is during the weeks of a holiday, before the overtime, that would be going forward still?
Right.
So if you see the benefit of holiday, then you do not get any overtime for that week.
Right, they didn't actually work 40 hours.
Yeah.
Yep.
So then we also have to talk about the policy of non-city employees and city vehicles.
This is not addressed in the personal policy, by the way.
I think it should be addressed in the personal policy because it's a liability.
100% agree.
Yes.
Yeah, because we don't want to pull people from...
Random places.
Random places.
Yeah.
And honestly, if they're needing, like Josh was saying, something about needing someone to help with water, I don't know. You have two of the summer hires that could have helped you.
Well, and Frank and Bill used to do it
By themselves.
By themselves, right?
The water meters?
Yeah, is it...
Josh's back does not allow him to do certain things. I do it by myself, but...
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, is at that point, instead of grabbing a random person, grab a summer hire or even ask one of us, that we would volunteer our time, too.
I think that all...
Yeah, because we're at least covered by the city insurance, for random people or not.
And so then my only other question is, we've had several probation violator type people help us. So they're... They do their community service with the city. So would they be allowed to ride in the vehicle or they not be allowed to ride in the vehicle? Because they help us shovel and train.
Because they're not paid for. As long as they're not being paid, they're not covered.
Because they did help read meters several times. So Tammy Russell read meters, and so did Candy read meters, and Alex read meters, and Chris read meters, and...
Maybe there's something else that they could do for their community service. That'd be my... It's my thoughts anyway.
Can wash the trucks.
Yeah, set them down in the fire hall.
Yeah.
My car needs washing, why not?
Do you think it's worth reaching out to ICRIM to see if they have something about that? Or do we just want to say something like the effect that, you know, non-city employees will not be allowed in a city vehicle about like the permission of, you know, from the mayor or the... Or something like that? That way...
Do we need to reach out to ICRIM?
Well, I would ask about release.
It never hurts to ask ICRIM.
I would ask about release of liability.
So if we did want to use the...
Yeah, they would have to sign release.
Because they are helpful. I mean, that's great, yeah. Instead, they've got something handy about that.
Because I can check with ICRIM. Maybe they have some kind of...
So should we table that until we hear from ICRIM as far as the... On the city, non-city employees and city vehicles?
You want to make a motion for that?
I move to... Well, I move to... But I also think we're ready to pass the overtime policy, correct?
All right.
So do we need two motions?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the overtime policies we discussed with getting paid time and a half when they're called out and then getting a full holiday at regular time within 60 days.
And it's in there, also.
Yeah, which is... Yeah, that's quite a fact.
So I don't think we need a motion for that because it's...
Because, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I mean...
So then we just...
Does this say what you want it to say? Yeah, we were just clarifying.
Is that how we interpret it, I guess, or yes? I'm good with that.
Then I don't think we need a motion if we're not making a change to the policy.
So then do we need to... I move to table the policy on non-city employees and city vehicles until we hear from ICRIM as far as release waiver or something is what they recommend.
I'll second.
So on, I think Bonnie Davis, she talks about... So the all employees would get a dollar, and then the summer hires would get bumped up to start at 11, right?
Right, maybe.
So now with...
Start?
Rose, is that her name?
Yeah, Rose.
So when she comes back, she would start at 11, right? Because that would be bumped up to the new hire, right?
No, she would be getting, because we've been giving them a 50 cent raise, so they'd be getting... She would be getting, instead of 10 and a half, she would get 11 and a half.
Oh, currently she's making 10, so she'd be getting 11.
Right, so she should be getting 11.
She would get 10 and a half.
No.
But she would be actually...
Go ahead.
Do you have something to add?
No.
Well, I'm just wondering because she's at 10 right now, right?
Okay.
So then...
And then next year...
She would get a dollar raise instead of a 50 cent raise, so she'd be brought up to 11, or the new one would start.
I think what Dick's trying to say is every October, he gives a 50 cent raise. So she would get a 50 cent raise in October. The next year when she starts, she would get bumped up by a dollar, so she'd be at...
But she's not working in October.
But that's just when all...
That's when all the raises kick in because it's...
Then they're the worst. You don't get a raise then. They won't get a raise.
Well, she'd be getting a raise to 11, right?
Well, we're lucky that when she restarts, but she won't get the 50 cent raise in October.
So she'll be getting a better one.
Because she'll get a dollar and a half when she comes back.
Instead of a dollar.
That's what she should get. And the starter should get... If you start, you should get 11.
I don't... I don't agree with that, though. I don't...
I do. You people don't realize how hard these people work.
I do realize that, Dick, but I think for her going from $10 to 11 and a half is not fair. I don't think that that's right. That is my opinion.
Well, I thought we're on about it as well, because I kind of was... When I first heard about it, I was a little like, what's going on? But riding down 21st Street, you know, Sharp starts at $13 an hour, McDonald's starts at 14. And I'm like...
You're right, but you're also having to consideration that these people live here in town. They're students. They're summer hire young girl. She's 15, 16 years old.
I know, I know.
So you have to think about those things, too.
Well, I can guarantee if you're the one up here in here that can keep up with it. I'll guarantee it. I know I work with them every day.
It's not about the value of work that they do. That's not what we're talking about. That's not my point.
Right. So if Nina comes back, if she does come back, then she's going to be... What is... What will she be at?
What is she making currently? You know, what do you have next, now?
11.
11.
So she'll be a lot fifty if she gets that October one. So she'll be a lot fifty if she gets that October raise.
Eleven and a half is what she makes now.
So then she'll get twelve if she gets that fifty cent raise in October that you guys are talking about.
And then, uh, Rose will be at eleven fifty and how long has Nina been here versus Rose?
This is her third summer.
So I'm just...
Rose is what?
First.
This is her first.
This is her first.
Your first year or last year?
Well, I'm...
You put the time in that they put in.
Oh, we need to get something.
They need, they start out at a dollar raise.
Right.
An hour raise.
So that puts her at eleven, because she's at ten. So if she, if everybody gets a dollar in October, then that would mean that that dollar takes the place of the fifty cents. So then she would be at eleven, then not, she's, so she would get her dollar raise, not a dollar fifty.
And then any new employee at that point starts at eleven?
And then any new employee would start at eleven. So she's getting her dollar raise. It's just she kind of started, you know, right before we moved the new hires to eleven. So it looks like she's making new hire rate, but she did get her dollar raise and everybody's getting her system dollar fifty. Is the way I look at it.
That's what I see too.
I'm trying to do the math with me, same thing. I mean, whenever anybody, especially when you get a raise like this, some people usually benefit more than others. I mean, it's just the way it is. Like you're saying, yeah, she might go up to eleven fifty, which puts her really close to someone who's been here longer, but... I mean, sometimes it's just, that's the way it is.
But I'm like, Nina. My, my view of it, they need a dollar raise.
Well, she's getting a dollar raise. She would get the dollar in October.
Then Nina would get a dollar raise.
So then Nina would be at twelve fifty, but she's been here two years longer than Rose. So that would be the right amount of difference between them, I would think.
So if I understand everybody right, then there's some of this disagreement and I haven't made a decision yet, but... So if we do it the way Dick wants to do it, every, every city employee gets a raise fifty cents in October.
Right, but we're, they're talking about moving it to a dollar this October. Right?
I thought it was just summer.
Well, it says, uh, all...
That's where I'm confused. I thought it was just summer.
Raises and I'm assuming, so is it just, are you guys getting the dollar as well or is it just summer hires?
I thought originally we started talking about this. It was just to start the base pay at eleven, not like give a full raise or...
Right.
I thought it was just to change the base pay.
Right, but then we, we talked about raises, because everybody gets a fifty cent raise in October.
So you need, so next year, if Rosie comes back, that means she gets eleven and a half. Because a automatic raise for a one dollar and she would get a fifty cent raise on top of that because...
So she's not a new summer hire. So what's the difference between a new summer hire and a returning summer hire? That's why I'm confused.
If you give the, the raise for a dollar, it'd be a ten, and you give it, give it a new, a dollar, then that's eleven bucks.
Right.
Alright, then Rosie, you've been here already a year and she would get her fifty cents raise, so that she would be getting eleven and a half an hour.
I see what you're saying, Dick, but... I don't know. I, I think it's...
If you want to raise it, if you're going to give the new hire eleven bucks, well, then they already would get, and we give everybody a fifty cent raise, so there you would be, it would be eleven and a half.
So basically, because she started before we raised it to eleven, she's going to essentially get a dollar fifty raise.
Right. Because that just, that would be the dollar because if you have another helper, it would be, would be, would start out at eleven dollars instead of ten.
Can I ask you a question? Is that permissible? So are you voting on whether or not to bring her back and give her a raise or are you voting on what the starting pay is?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Because she might not even do that.
That was, that was the point. The point was, we wanted to make the initial new hire base pay at eleven dollars.
Right, and now it's, now it says, which if they already get fifty cents. So I guess I'm confused as to... This is just to grant summer hires the fifty cent raise or the dollar raise?
No, summer, they want to raise a dollar.
To start.
The base pay, the base pay. So Nina's not going to get the dollar, but Rose would. Rose would get the dollar plus the fifty cent in October.
No, they both get a dollar raise because they're summer employees.
But Rose would still get a dollar fifty?
Yeah, well...
Yeah, that's what it's, because she's at ten, so if she gets the dollar to start at the new hire, then she gets a fifty cent raise in October. So then she gives a dollar fifty.
The other employees getting a dollar fifty as well.
No, the other employees are getting a dollar.
Fifty cent raise in October.
Or fifty cent, yeah, fifty.
And they're all getting, see, I think, I think that's where our problem is. I think we're comparing apples to oranges here. Is every, I think we're ending it. So are we all in agreement that all city employees in October getting a fifty cent raise? Yes?
Is it fifty cents or a dollar? Fifty cents.
It's fifty cents, that's what we...
Right.
Right.
So everybody's going to get fifty cents, no matter if they're seasonal, full time, part time, whatever. So we said that, so everybody's going to get that. Then if the summer help, which is usually two people, where you give them, like Mark said, are we giving them a dollar raise? Or was the intention just to make sure everybody who works in the summer is going to make at least eleven dollars?
The start at eleven.
So, so she was, yeah, so to start at eleven. So basically, she would get bumped up to eleven.
Correct.
And then she would also get the fifty cent raise, which would put her at eleven fifty. And then Nina would get bumped up to twelve, so she would be making...
Fifty cent raise because she's...
Right, and she's been here two years longer.
Nina makes eleven fifty right now.
Right, so in October she would make twelve. So she would make fifty cents an hour more than Rose, who's only been here one year, and this would be Nina's third year. So by the fifty cents per year, Nina should be a dollar more, because she would have two years on Rose. So then Nina should be, either Nina stays at twelve and Rose stays at eleven, or Nina should be at twelve fifty if Rose is going to be eleven fifty because Nina's been here two years longer. So that's why I think where the confusion is, is is she getting, is Rose getting bumped to eleven and then Nina's getting bumped to twelve? Or is Rose getting bumped to eleven fifty and Nina still goes only to twelve?
You give them, you give them, the base pay is, is eleven dollars and then they get the raise on top of that.
Right, but I, I understand what you're saying, but she's getting eleven fifty and then Nina's only going to get twelve. No, she would get twelve, because she gets the fifty cent an hour raise, Nina does, right in October. Right?
The base bill... The base pay goes up.
When is the base pay going to start to go up? Is it starting to go up right now or is it going to start at the first of next year?
And I'm going to...
October.
So that's when now that should be, should be a fifty cent raise this year for the annual fifty cent raise. So she'll be at ten fifty next summer.
If we just start the base pay at eleven.
But if we start the base pay at eleven, then she just goes up to eleven.
But how do we do that? Because we're saying all the employees are going to, all season employees are going to get a dollar an hour. So...
Do you want to address it?
So just, this is what the school does. So when they, they just went through an increase for the aides and classified people. And if you were making less than that, you're automatically bumped up. So the base, the, the pay for the classified people, they've got gradations. If you're making less than that, you're bumped up to that.
See, that's how I feel that it should be with, with Rose. I don't think she'd be bumped up to eleven fifty. I think she should be bumped to eleven.
That, that's, I mean, because...
That's a dollar. If she's not getting fifty cents, she's getting a dollar.
So this would actually have to be that all city employees are getting a fifty cent raise. And any employees like Eric's saying that are under the eleven dollars would be made whole. And that would be with also the summer employees.
Yep.
Based on that scenario are not getting a dollar raise. It's just all employees are getting a fifty cent raise.
And if you're below...
And if you're below eleven dollars, you are made whole.
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
That's what I think was the difference, as we were fighting, like Mark said, we were kind of debating on two different, two different things. So if, if Dick wants to give everybody a dollar raise and we have what we're talking about where one person gets a little bit more of a jump on the other. Or we go with this one where every city employee gets their fifty cents and anybody who's below eleven dollars would get eleven dollars.
It's eleven dollars.
So that would be, I guess, the... What would be the immediate meaning of that?
So somebody's going to be like, I mean, if, I could see where Nina would be upset where she's been two years longer, but then I could also see, so somebody's going to be upset possibly where it's either Nina or Rose.
See, now this is where we're just starting this. I mean, it kind of takes a hard...
Right, because she came in right at the, you know...
Usually when I try to do this, people, somebody usually doesn't get more, somebody gets more than the other. It's just the way it is when you restructure your base pay.
Here's, here's the other thing is what you had said about anybody under eleven gets, gets pushed to eleven. Because you have to understand, the summer is over, girls are going back to school in a couple of weeks. We aren't going to approve or, um, you know, because we have to have, we'll have, Wendy will have to write something up on how we want to say this. Plus, we're going to have to, next month, we're going to have to approve all the fifty cent raises for everybody, um, so that we get it on the books by October.
I think it can happen this month, because nothing was supposed to start until the new fiscal year, so we could talk about this, but nobody's getting any kind of a raise until...
Until October one.
Right, so my way of thinking is it doesn't, you know, matter that she started at ten, as long as we bump her up to eleven. If Nina comes back, she'll get her fifty cent raise.
If she doesn't, then none of her...
If she doesn't.
Her spot starts at eleven.
Right. So, and that's the way it should be. And then if, if Rose stays another year, she gets fifty cent raise, just like everybody else. So, I mean, I understand we're the city and it's not like we're poor, but, you know, or broke or whatever, but, um, like you said, they're, they're students. Um, they don't really have bills to pay like everybody else. I don't think that they need to start at sixteen dollars an hour. So just because McDonald's is paying it in Lewiston, but Lewiston's a bigger town and some of those people have kids and bills to pay, so...
Well, you can't say they don't have it. It's like Nina, she's going to college. That's, that's a very expensive job she has.
Yeah, but that's her choice. So, and if she wants to get a different job and with higher pay, she can do that, you know, so...
Well, I think the big thing for me is Nina's been with us three years. So is it fair to Nina to, if she does come back, to be only fifty cents an hour more than Rose, who's only been here one year?
Well, two years at that point.
Well, two years at that point. So there's a two-year difference.
Else.
Or year, what, what is, like, because how long, Nina, is this been second year or third year?
This is her third year.
Third year. So Nina's been here two years longer than Rose. So if she comes back, that'll be her fourth year. So then is it fair to Nina to be only fifty cents an hour more?
When Rose just got a dollar and a half?
When Rose just got a dollar and a half.
Oh, not at all. Well, then we better make it.
It's a touchy subject.
You could talk yourselves into circles for this.
Yeah, I think so. Whether, yeah, we could talk ourselves into circles. We just need to figure out, I mean, somebody's going to be upset.
Well, some way we've got to make this, this is how it is now because we started, maybe Nina has to go up a dollar more, so she has a dollar fifty more or something then.
Well, we may not even be that next summer.
I mean, that's a, we don't have a problem with this. We just have to sit there, because we all know probably in another year...
We can't look at those names, look at this person, name, summer hire one and summer hire two.
But also, in another year or two, we'll probably be looking at this and move it to twelve, I mean, it's just the way the world is. We're going to be dealing with this constantly. And every time we do that, like Dick's saying, one person here, one person up here, it's always, there's always going to be... We're either going to run into one of these two issues, either somebody's going to get a bigger bump than somebody and somebody's going to be upset about that. Or everybody's going to get the same and anybody else might get where they keep the minimum, or I guess that's just what has to be decided. We're going to deal with this every time we, because the, it's going to be all the time.
Also two, we used to have one, summer employee, now we have two. And also the other thing is, is that shouldn't it be the high school students? Huh?
Sorry, I didn't understand.
It doesn't make any, I, I had, just like Gage, he was there for six summers. And, and, uh, he gave to do any job in this town, any job.
We should just put down what we're going to do and then just keep going on.
Right. It could be that Rose doesn't come back next year either. She might find something else.
So I guess to me, we either need to, somebody needs to make a motion, because it sounds like most people want to do either that everybody gets a fifty cent raise and anybody who's below eleven dollars will make eleven dollars, but that's it. Nobody's getting a dollar raise. If that's what, I think Dick wants that, but it doesn't sound like anybody else does, is what it sounds like.
Well, he wants, he, he wants Rose to get the dollar fifty.
Right, that's the thing. She would get a dollar raise and then, but how do we, I mean, you can't do that for one person.
So I would say I make a motion to start the base pay at eleven. Anybody under that starts at eleven when they come back, if they come back a second year.
I'll second that.
And then everybody else is just going to get their fifty cent raise.
Fifty cent raise.
Hang on, hang on.
Okay, make sure this is right.
Councilman Anderson calls for a roll call vote. You have to say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Hang on.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Can't you write faster?
Not anymore. Okay, so I need you to...
Yes.
And then I seconded.
Nick.
And also called for a roll call.
Okay, I'm ready.
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay. Uh, can we talk about all the employees? Is that just, started the base pay at eleven dollars?
And so we need to motion that all city employees will get their fifty cent raise, right? Make a motion that we accept that all the city employees for fiscal twenty twenty-two will get their fifty cent raise.
I'll second.
Just... The water plant is up in the way. It's making water and we're keeping up, so I'm very, very happy. I hope it continues. It seems like we're getting water from somewhere between July and kindergarten. I think there's a stream on, on my wells, there's something.
How are people doing as far as...
I made a mistake on saying that noise out because I think people kind of went haywire, like they panicked and like overwatered, because there was some, what did Josh, I tried to keep track of some high numbers or something.
You know, it seemed to me, and I wasn't studying, I didn't compare anything, but when I was putting in, Nina's, it seemed like, oh, some of these are lower than I would think they're what, that they should be. And then we got to the, they traditionally high users and they're just way up there, so, you know, they're all keeping their lawns just as green as ever, apparently.
I'll give my part tonight.
Sorry. I'm like, what? I'd like stuff for us to put on.
No, 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 I just, nothing, I just didn't know, I mean, I know we put some stuff out, it's worth putting back out, just saying, hey, we're still doing cable, we're still having to...
Well, I mean, I...
For what it's worth.
I just think that's the council, the kind of position, because I know Dick's... I didn't, I see council on a kind of position, because I know Dick's been hammered, and people have been asking him, and people have been going crazy, but... I felt if I didn't say something, then we're all of a sudden just out of water, they'll be like, how come you didn't say we're...
Hundred percent right.
Yeah. And some people were overreacting, well, I'm gonna use it all right now. Um, but I just wanted, I just freed up, because I don't know if it's worth putting in like the...
We still got two months.
I know we're, we're not over...
We've still got a long ways to go.
It's got a hundred and eighty temperatures.
At least three, maybe three months.
The problem is with putting anything out there, about how carefully worded, or what do you say, there are people who just don't read the whole thing, they don't pay attention. They say three words and make up their own story, I mean, you just, you can't control that.
So we're, we're meeting our filtration requirements, we are meeting our dissection requirements, we are, the water is very warm, especially on the hundred day, day, degree days, the water, and it tastes not the greatest, but at least it's there, and, you know, and we have a heavy restriction, so we'll just keep it properly. And the park is really back up slowly, but the fire department has been down there, they have a new quick connect on our sprinkler system, so they can now have a fire hose on our sprinkler system, and they can fill their pool, they have a collapsible pool they can fill for their water.
Fold the tank.
What's that?
Fold the tank, but yeah, in case of a...
A pool, yeah. And so they've been practicing and spraying water.
We can, yeah, use trick water.
Yeah, we've been, we've been watering the park for a bit.
So that's, it's coming along, so the park will be ready for the Blackberry Festival. And we're planning on that, full steam ahead. The Blackberry Committee is very nervous, I'll tell you, a few people are not coming to the Blackberry Festival, but are on the committee, because they're very nervous about COVID, and they're very nervous about restrictions, but we, at this point, I believe we're definitely having it, definitely going ahead with it, and people can monitor their own lives at this point, unless something comes down from the other, or something higher, so...
God.
Um, I have, I wanted to let you know that school's starting the twenty-fourth, so we need to have the cross and the big scene.
I already, I brought it up to Josh this week, and we could get those painted, and we have one five gallon bucket left, and we have to get another, but yeah, so we'll get, get going.
And then I've been asked about the, um, Old Main, people drive so fast coming down from Old Main, and going up too, but when the, um, when they come out on Cross Street, really have to come way out to see, and then sometimes when they're coming down fast, so I don't know whether there's a intersection sign, or a speed sign, or something we could have out there.
Or a stupid sign.
Or a stupid sign, if I read that. Or a speed bump or something, you know, you know, we have a whole catalog full of signs, and so Wendy and I, or me and Joshua, we will get to go look through that catalog and see if there's something that fits, that says, you know, precaution, or intersection ahead, or... That would, that would be nice, they were asking, because people, there's a lot, well, there's not that many people, but there's two or three people that are out there. I know when I come down my driveway, and if I look down and nobody's coming, I look up and nobody's coming, and I drive out, and then pretty soon there's somebody right on my bumper, you know, because they really come fast down Old Main. And then I was wondering about, did we do anything about the flag pole and the new flag, or anything, we did anything? We talked about that a few months ago, that we needed to paint the pole out there.
I didn't know we needed a new, did we order a new pole?
I don't know, I don't think she had to order one.
I don't know, well, someone was saying that it was torn, that's what they said, they told me it was torn.
Okay, we'll get one or get a put up.
That's all I have, I don't have anything.
Um, newsletter, does anybody have anything I should put in there?
You can put the Christmas thing in there again.
Has anybody ever called you?
No. So I don't know, I mean, if we, if we wanted, it's just, if you want to put it in there, we have to have the best of luck.
Do you want something in there about water, Justin, do you think?
Yeah, you and I can just put a, an update in there to the water situation, and say that, you know, we're still hoping people are conserving, because it is.
Say thank you to those who are concerned, you know, ask them, or just say, hey, you know...
It's helping.
Yeah, and we gotta be worthwhile, recognize those who try.
Well, I take them back once a week.
I just go spill water for the neighbors.
That's why I hear people going, I ain't two in the morning.
Yeah, run through there on the way to work.
No, I don't have anything.
Uh, I want to thank you for putting a note on the water bills that we still have a bird man. I appreciate that. Also, Justin, we probably ought to think about flushing some hydrants when there's water. Because it's starting to look like Coca-Cola coming out of some of these hydrants.
Okay, yeah, that's totally fine, we just coordinated a day with us, well...
Tell me when you got enough water.
Well, we're full now.
Oh.
We're keeping it full, we just need to know when you're doing it, so we'll make sure the pumps...
Then we need to borrow your diffuser, so we don't wash out everybody's driveways.
What's that?
Let's not do it, so we have...
Well, yeah, correct, but...
If I could get a heads up, too, I could put it on Facebook and let me know, because people call us, and I don't know anything about it.
We actually turned, I turned down Herco, and Josh has turned down Poe for coming getting water at the water plant, even though they would pay for it. One truckload will set us back six hours on pumping, you know what I mean, so it's like, we're, we're really taking this seriously. And now I heard Kendrick is, you have to go through city council not to get water from them, they were allowing them to, but now you have to go through the city council, so...
You could sell them trick water.
Yeah, we, I told them, I said, hey, there's a pump down there, just head on there.
Put a heater on it, charge them a buck a gallon, and yeah.
They turn the drain out.
Might as well make some money.
I'm going to do a jury.